Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Greenspan?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Present.
Present.
Mr. Germana?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Schran?
Here.
Ms. Conwell?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum present for our work session. We do have a published agenda, however, there's a request for the interoperability presentation to go first. And that actually is a new word for me. I thought I was a great wordsmith, but that is a new word for me. So I believe it's the chief from Bedford Heights is here if you'd like to come forward.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I should say.
All right, have a seat and like introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm fine. I don't want to sit, that's fine.
But there's, they took your chair.
Do it again.
All right.
I'm better standing.
Okay.
My name is Ken Ledford, and I'm from the city of Bedford Heights.
And that's in District Nine?
Yes, ma'am. And I am the fire chief there. So everybody always says Ledford from Bedford, so that's the way it is. But I am here representing the Cuyahoga County Fire Chiefs Association. I am the vice president of that organization, and I am the current chairman of the Public Safety Urban Area Working Group. And we are going to ask for your support on some current legislation that will be forthcoming to you regarding interoperable radio communications. I am not a technical radio guy. I brought somebody that will be able to explain that to you a little bit better, and that will be Chief Kevin Moore from the city of Cleveland Heights.
Chief Moore?
Madam President, members of council, thank you very much. I'm Kevin Moore from Cleveland Department and past chair of the Cuyahoga County Communications Committee. The term interoperable communications can be a little bit confusing. It's a new term for a lot of people. But after 9/11, it was a lack of interoperable communications that caused a great deal of death. And that was because without interoperable communications, the various emergency responders at a large-scale incident cannot talk to one another. And when they cannot talk, they cannot coordinate, they can't make the best use of the resources that are there. And so shortly after 9/11, the development of interoperable communications became a national priority. Unfortunately, four years later, when Katrina hit, we found that we hadn't done a very good job. It was a terrible problem again during Katrina. And so the government, federal government, began to pour a lot of money into the larger cities to develop interoperable communication systems. And these are, it's infrastructure, radio towers and repeaters, and very technical, but it is a web of interoperable towers that allow us to talk to one another. The standard that the government came up with is something called P-25. It's a suite of standards, but basically what it means is, these large manufacturers such as Motorola and Harris can no longer create systems that are proprietary. So if I buy a brand-new radio, and I go to a large-scale event, and there's a P-25 infrastructure, I can talk. I'm not going to be closed out because I have a different manufacturer's radio. So it's very, very important. When we took a look at what Cuyahoga County had after 2001, in Cuyahoga County, we had 47 different radio systems. So it was not at all unusual to respond to a fire on mutual aid, and you can't talk to the other fire departments. You can't talk to the police departments, you can't talk to EMS. And so it wasn't too long after 9/11 that Cuyahoga County began to assess what we need to do. And what we needed to do was provide a P-25 compliant interoperable communication system. And the iteration we're working on right now involves 13 communication towers. We have just about completed that. But one of the grants that we're using to complete that project is a 2008 UASI grant. UASI is Urban Area Security Initiative. And that grant will soon be coming to an end, the performance period. So we do need to spend approximately $860,000 to complete the final leg of this project. And those projects involve, or those independent projects involve, a tower at 90 and Columbia Road, a tower at 480 and Sterns, and a tower out by Chagrin. We call it the Chagrin Tower. Unfortunately, these highly technical projects often get bogged down because of not only the technical aspects, but even the federal government. When the federal government comes in and they require that we do NEPA, Environmental Studies, wherever we put a tower, and this can slow us down quite a bit. We almost made it, but we're coming to an end with this grant. We need to get it done quickly. And what we would like to do in this pending legislation that we hope that you will support is to transfer that money down to the state of Ohio and through the MARCS system, which is Ohio's multi-agency radio system. They have over 200 towers throughout the state of Ohio, and let them complete the project for us. It also makes good sense because when we decided that we needed to implement an interoperable communication project, we also got to tap into the idea of regionalization. So to drive the cost down even further, we partnered with other counties and the state of Ohio. So we use a great deal of infrastructure that was existing, and we enhanced it specifically here in Cuyahoga County. So we feel that if we can get this money transferred down to the state and let MARCS complete these towers, and again, they have the expertise more than anybody else, they've built over 200 of them, we can get the final leg of this project done. So we do ask for your support in that pending legislation that will be coming. Also, here today is Mayor Cicero from the city of Lynnhurst, and he would like to say a few words as well.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Joe Cicero. I'm the mayor of the city of Lynnhurst, and also the representative from the Mayors and Managers Association to the Public Safety Urban Area Working Group. What that really means is that nobody else wanted the job, and I got elected to it. You guys will get there sooner enough, I'm sure. This 860-some thousand dollars that we are talking about is money that was given to us in a grant that was, the county is the fiscal manager, the county and the city of Cleveland. So what we're asking for in this pending legislation is just for you allowing that money to be transferred down so the state can install these towers. This has been going on for over 10 years. Interoperable communications has been something that we have been trying to work on, and there has been a lack of understanding really between the 57 municipalities as to how this should be done and does it really need to be done. As that has gone on, the capabilities have changed. We're now talking about a P-25 system, we're talking about low banding, we're talking about MARCS 800 radio systems. All this really means, and all you really need to know, is that everybody's going to be able to talk to anybody, anywhere in the state of Ohio. Let's hope to God we don't have to talk to someone in Cincinnati because that means there's a major disaster that has happened throughout the state. But what it also will entail is giving us the opportunity to talk across communities. And in conditions like with the flood that we had just recently and some of the major snowstorms, these radios would come in handy in those situations. So we appreciate all your work. We just wanted to educate you a little bit about what interoperability is doing. And if there's any questions that we can answer in that regard, we'd be more than happy to at this time, or you can always get ahold of any one of us. The Mayors and Managers Association supports this. It's something good for the community, for Cuyahoga County, and we look for your support in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher, did you want to explain where this is in the process of litigation? Or legislation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At Monday's Public Safety Committee hearing, we had, I believe, 12 chiefs from around Cuyahoga County, plus Mayor Cicero, and they gave us a more extensive layout of the interoperability system. And the legislation was not prepared at that time, it was being prepared that day. And our hope is, is that council will pass that legislation, which I believe is in the pipeline or done now on our meeting, our first meeting in April.
I think.
Mr. Cologne?
Madam President, members of council, yes, it has been from administrative side, it has been submitted, and we are hoping that it will make the agenda for April 12.
Madam Chair. And I'd just like to thank all the chiefs again for taking another day out of their busy days to come down here and explain to the full council. The Public Safety Committee thought it important that they come here and tell the full council what was going on, and if there was any questions, that this would be the appropriate time to do that, because time is of the essence.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schran, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Cicero, in regards to the, was it P-25 that we're talking about as far as being interoperable, in light of what just took place in Japan with, and God forbid, the nuclear power, is that going to be communication, be able to go into Erie? Because I consider those to be friends and neighbors in our region also, and it's certainly going to be something that would certainly be within the same scope.
I don't, I may look like a geek, but I'm not.
Well, unfortunately, you're the last one on the podium, and you said any questions, so unfortunately.
Because of the way we've partnered with the state of Ohio, we could send police, fire, EMS from Cleveland down to Cincinnati, and they could talk to one another. The system is statewide because of the way that we partnered. So it is truly an interoperable system. And in fact, there are even some states that we could travel into and use this system. So to answer your question, it's a highly interoperable system that will allow police, fire, EMS, public health, hospitals, service departments to talk all to one another on common radio frequencies. And there are many, many frequencies so that we don't overcrowd the radio waves.
Mr. Rogers?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Chief Moore, thank you for the presentation, and you're a councilman in Cleveland Heights, so welcome to this meeting. I had a couple of questions on the grant. How much was the total grant for? And we were able to do 10 out of 13 towers with the initial grant?
The monies that have been coming down for the last 10 years total in the tens of millions of dollars. This last piece of the grant money, was it $6 million from '08?
Four.
A little over $5 million. That money's been allocated throughout our subcommittees for homeland security throughout the Cuyahoga County area. This is just one aspect of it. With the MARCS radios being, dragging its tail for a long time, now that they have the capabilities and these last two towers can go up to complete the system, we need to move forward with this money to get it done.
Gotcha. Will we be penalized at all for having to transfer money to the state?
Not one, no. The money is for us to do with what we need to do to put us in a position to protect our residents.
And do we know what money, what vendors the state will be using? Will they, do they use local vendors to?
Madam President, to the councilmen, the state provider is Motorola.
Motorola. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Madam President, is the, what is the source of funding for the $800,000-plus cost for the remaining segment? And is that cost included in the county's 2011 budget, or will an additional appropriation be needed?
Madam President, to the councilperson, I apologize, I, Nuberto Cologne, Deputy Chief of Staff, Justice, should have said that earlier. The $800,000 that you will see forthcoming in the legislation, the funding will be from the 2008 UASI grant, the Urban Area Security Initiative grant, all of it would be grant funds.
Ms. Simon?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to welcome Mayor Cicero, who Lynnhurst Mayor is in my district. It's good to see you down here. Mayor Servenek beat you for another project, so how does this work? Does this, so the money came from a grant, it's in our budget, and then it goes to the state, and then the state's going to disperse it to the Cuyahoga County municipalities to...
No, it's federal, it's federal money. This is all federal.
Oh, so it's just going to the state?
Yeah.
And then how is it determined where it's distributed? After it hits?
Is that, Madam President, to the councilwoman, is your question after it hits, after we return it to the state?
Yes.
The money is specifically going to the state of Ohio for the department that runs the MARCS radio system. They actually provide and run and operate their own radio system. We're just giving it to them in order to expand that system to support Cuyahoga County.
The county is a clearinghouse, Councilwoman, for the monies?
From the federal grant.
It's not coming from Cuyahoga County, it's coming from the federal grant.
I understand. It originated with a federal, a federal grant?
Exactly, yes.
And it's going to the state? And all this will include the equipment as well? This money includes all the equipment that's going to be everything comprehensively? This will be the final piece?
Yes. This will complete the system.
Great. And what's taken so long, Mayor Cicero? You said it's taken 10 years?
Politics.
Okay.
Red tape, funding, making sure the money's being put in the right place at the right time. Just a lot of miscommunications, as Madam President said, interoperability is a new word to you. It's a new word to a lot of people.
Okay. Thanks for the perseverance in coming down again.
Mr. Greenspan?
Thank you, Madam President. And I do apologize for, I was on the committee, I apologize for not being there yesterday. The, I know that five of my communities currently have an interoperative system for fire and EMS on the West Shore. How will this impact them? And they're also looking at a joint fire authority. How will that impact that relationship, should that occur?
Well, this particular grant, or request that we're making, and the system that we're building is essential to the cities you're referring to. I actually live out there. And while they do have a common communication system right now, that common communication system must be enhanced because of something called narrowbanding, which is another federal requirement. The choice for those cities is to simply narrowband, put money into it, narrowband their system, but it won't be one more bit interoperable than it is today. And that is a very limited system. Most people in Cuyahoga County do not have the high band that is used out in the West Shore cities. But recently, the West Shore cities, as a number of other groups of cities throughout Cuyahoga County, have received is a very large grant through the Assistance of Firefighter Grant, which is FEMA, this is federal money, to specifically purchase 800 megahertz radios. And those are the radios that work on this P-25 interoperable system. They have already received the grant, they have already purchased the radios. What they need now is the finalization of the infrastructure that will serve them to use those radios. Now, there are, in the Heights and Hillcrest area, approximately 14 cities that are on, for the purpose of fire EMS, that are on the MARCS system right now. The greater, the more we can enhance the system, the better it will work, the more it will be available to cities throughout Cuyahoga County. So to answer your question, it is actually vitally important to those cities that are under the Westcon Communication Center.
Madam President, to the councilman, if I may, what it's going to do, even in more simpler terms, for a lot of the communities, it's going to give them one radio. And so right now, if you're responding to an incident in the city of Cleveland, you're forced to carry your radio that's about this big, that's the City of Cleveland radio. But then if it's a large scale, you're forced to take this state radio as well, and you're walking around with two radios. And so just in the common sense in those communities, it's going to allow you to carry one radio, and within that radio, you're going to be able to turn your channels or your frequencies and talk to other communities throughout the state. It's a big deal.
Thank you. No further questions.
Anything further? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is discussing regarding Defending Childhood Initiative. Mr. Craig Tame is here.
Madam President, to the council?
And you may be seated if you like.
On the floor?
Oh, go get your chair.
I see a lot of familiar faces. Seems like we've been talking about interoperability since the tragic date years ago, and we're still working on it. I'm here today to talk about the Defending Childhood Initiative. I'm going to give you a little background before I start about myself. Currently, I'm with the United States Department of Justice, US Attorney's Office. I'm the law enforcement manager. So I put together anti-gang initiatives and different strategies to combat violence in northern Ohio. In doing that, we've also partnered with the city of Cleveland and Cuyahoga County on a number of initiatives, among the one I'm going to talk about today, the Defending Childhood Initiative. Defending Childhood is an initiative of Attorney General Eric Holder that strives to harness resources from across the Department of Justice to reduce childhood exposure to violence by developing and implementing activities that prevent children's initial and repeated exposure to violence, to increase knowledge and awareness by advancing scientific inquiry on the causes and characteristics of childhood exposure, and supporting education outreach efforts to improve understanding, to reduce the negative impact of childhood exposure by improving systems and services that identify and assist youth and families who have been impacted by violence to reduce trauma, build resilience, and promote healing. There's extensive national research upon the impact of trauma on children, and how it affects their development. And I have literature that I can share with the council at a later time to substantiate that. In 1999, actually, when I was with, I was employed by Cuyahoga County, I directed a department called Justice Affairs. We put together a Children Who Witness Violence project. And what we did is, we started, we worked with university hospitals, Heidi Gartland, we worked with the Cleveland Foundation, we worked with Kent State University, and a lot of other partners, Cleveland Police. And we put together a project, because what was happening is, when police were going out to either domestic violence calls, or shootings, or trouble in neighborhoods, they felt helpless because children would be exposed to violence and nothing, there was no treatment follow-up, there's no follow-through. So we put a project together, we got some funding for it, to contract with mental health services. And what there would be is a 24/7 hotline. When the policeman arrived at the scene, they would give, it was a voluntary project, they would give a card to the parent or the caretaker in whether they wanted follow-up services. That project has gone on since 1999, under the county administration, and has received a lot of national accolades, and very successful. It was started in a pilot in the 4th Police District, where then Commander McGrath, now Police Chief McGrath, took it on. It started in the 1st District on the west side of Cleveland. We did it in Lakewood, and we did it in Garfield Heights. In all four of those areas, it was highly successful. This past fall, Attorney General Holder came out with a Defending Childhood Initiative. He sees, his approach to combating violence is a three-pronged approach. One is prevention, with a heavy emphasis on prevention. The second is intervention suppression, we investigate and we prosecute violent criminals. And the third is reentry. A project we're working in right now is called the Anti-Gang Initiative, and we do those things. Perhaps in a later date, we can talk about that. The defending childhood, or the prevention area that we're talking about today is defending childhood. Cuyahoga County competed last fall nationally, and was selected over thousands of other cities as one of eight communities nationally to be awarded for the planning phase of the project. They competed nationally and were selected with the city of Boston, city of Portland, Maine, the Chippewa Creek Tribe in Montana, city of Grand Forks, the Maltonama County Department of Human Services of Oregon, Portland, Oregon, Rosebud Sioux Tribe, and Memphis Tennessee Shelby County. So it was quite a compliment that Cuyahoga County, and it shows the commitment of this county to protecting its children, that they were selected, of all of those communities, to go to the, to be selected for the planning phase. They were given about $170,000, and I'll go into this document now. Cuyahoga County was one of eight communities selected nationally to compete for implementation funding for the United States Attorney Eric Holder's Defending Childhood Demonstration Project. Defending Childhood is designed to prevent and reduce the impact of children's exposure to violence in their homes, communities, and schools. Every year, millions of children in all walks of life are abused, exposed to domestic violence, or witness violence in their schools or communities. Cuyahoga County has convened over 100 stakeholders to develop a comprehensive action plan to transform our communities into a safe haven for children that rejects the inevitability of violence. Steve Dattelback, the United States Attorney for the Northern District of Ohio, serves as the chairman of the governing board, joined by six vice chairmen and six subcommittee chairmen, forming a 13-member committee. There are seven subcommittees, which will, in a plan, will be submitted to the United States Department of Justice on May 1, 2011, with the strongest approaches, receiving up to $2 million. The four top projects, communities, will receive $2 million each for the implementation phase, and the four other projects will receive $500,000 each. Recognizing the enormity of the task of preventing and intervening in violence on behalf of children, we have set a goal of raising $8 million over three years to begin our transformation. We assume success in being selected is one of the communities receiving the highest award from the United States Department of Justice. We will assume we will be able to identify in-kind contributions of $4 million locally, leaving $2 million to be raised from new private and governmental sources, or $667,000 annually over the next three years. Currently, Cuyahoga County has a Children Who Witness Violence project, and they're lining out a budget, and I think it's for $500,000. And they receive another roughly $60,000 from Victim McCrymick funds, the Attorney General's Any questions? I think what we're asking council today is for your support. We're not asking for money, we're asking for your conceptual support, so that when we go to the Department of Justice, we can say that we have our community behind us.
I'm sure that council is very supportive of this, and if you need a, you know, a letter from all of us indicating our support, we'd be happy. I assume, I speak for, on behalf of the council, that I would assume we would be supportive of that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr.?
Mr. Tame, how are you?
Hi.
You absolutely would support it, but you're not going to come back in a year or two and ask for money, are you? Because we, you know, when it's federal government, and it's federal loans, it just flipped upside down.
Yeah. I mean, I want to emphasize, this is a county project. This is a project, it's county executive and the county council, and we support it completely. And we will assist in any way we can. But I can't predict the future in terms of, you have a commitment now to this project. The Cleveland Foundation is supporting it, a number of other foundations are supporting it. We think it's beneficial. A lot of it's true, a lot of good things are happening in Cuyahoga County already. In the school district, you have the PAS program, you have Tapestry, you have the Family Children First Council, so a lot of innovative programs. So what we think we're doing right now is do an audit of everything that's existing, and making sure they're all best practices. And then that alone is going to, in-kind money exceeding $3, $4 million. So find out what's going on, and what are the gap areas, and fill those gap areas.
All right, Mr. Greenspan?
I'm sorry, thank you. Madam President, what, the programs that look like this is going, what's new, I guess is my question? What is this $8 million going to be used for that's currently not in place? I understand doing an evaluation of best practices is necessary, but what's new?
Well, you know, the magnitude of the problem is one of the issues. The 60% of kids, or 70% of kids, particularly in the city of Cleveland, have been exposed to violence at the highest level, and that right now, they're not getting intervention. The Children Who Witness Violence project, which is in place now, serves a smaller group of children. So there's a lot of untreated children that go through this project. So it would be expanded to incorporate all children exposed to violence that we can reach throughout Cuyahoga County, and what also, there would be a media campaign to raise people's awareness, and parents, of the impact of exposure to violence on children.
Okay, so, Madam President, so are you saying that 60% of the need is in the city of Cleveland, and 40% is the surrounding county?
I think what, the statistics we got locally from the city of Cleveland was that exposure to violence was at a higher level. Exposure to violence nationally is very high. In some of the suburban areas, it would be lower than the city of Cleveland, but still high.
I'm just trying to get back to Councilman Gallagher's comments. Supporting it, I got, my interpretation, I got a vague response as far as what supporting it means. Supporting it philosophically is one thing, supporting it economically, I think, was the...
No, I understand, I understand the question. We're still in the planning phase, too, Councilman. And so what we're doing right now is, we're in the planning phase, in fact, on April 8, I've invited council president to attend, there's going to be, all the subcommittees will come together, and what will it take to make this successful? So at that stage, there'll be a more comprehensive plan. Our justice partners from Washington and across the country are going to come and work with us so that we can have a more detailed plan about what it exactly means, what it means, what it will look like with all the meat on the bones. I understand your question. I mean, in fact, some would say that $8 million may be a small number. So it was just a number we, a number we started to work with at first, based upon the past. Right now, what's happening is, if you take the $600,000 that is spent through Cuyahoga County per year for this project, it's 1.8 million over three years, in serving, I don't have the numbers that is being served now, but a considerably small part of the population.
So, Madam President, if I may, just one final question. So a vote of support for the project today does not constitute a commitment for funding down the road?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam President?
Question, Mr. Jones, I'm sorry.
As you've asked, Mr. Tame, you've asked for our conceptual support.
As you've asked, Mr. Tame, you've asked for our conceptual support. I'm still trying to grasp the concept. Are we saying that children who have seen violent deaths, that these are children that you are reaching out to and helping?
Shootings, domestic violence, abuse in the schools, fights.
How are you, how are these children being referred to?
The way it's working right now is Mental Health Services has a hotline that's operating and it goes 24/7. And social workers will be dispatched to the scene and make contact with the family and do an assessment of the child to determine the impact of the violence. Some children are very resilient, don't require much follow-up. Some children require quite a bit of follow-up. Otherwise, it will have, it's almost like a post-traumatic stress syndrome. I'm not a clinician, but the research has shown that it can have tremendous detrimental effect on their lives.
When it comes to the Ohio victim of crimes, I've dealt with that organization as a funeral director, so I know the children are seeing a lot of violence. And in my own experience, I was in high school, my high school friend, we sat next to each other for years. We both went to separate colleges, and then I got word in freshman year that he had died from meningitis. And that wasn't violent, it was just a death, but for children that you're expecting you're going to live forever. So that impacted me, you know, dreams, nightmares, things like this, just thinking about it. And that was in the mid-'80s. So now, to see children who have to go through that and it's from violence, I can see the need. That's not a question, just a comment. And I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Simon and I have our plan to attend the meeting on the 8th. Other members are interested, but we anticipate getting follow-ups from you and keeping us abreast of what we need to do.
Gladly, gladly. In fact, Janet Cronenberg, who works for the county now, is kind of doing leadership. The committee is trying to determine how, what governance will look like in the future, and we've made no recommendations on that because we have a new Executive Council and we have a new county executive. And so the structural changes that will take place in the county. And we understand that there's a lot of competing priorities and what have you. But this has been successful and our office supports it and are hopeful of getting additional funding to support it.
And Mr. Miller.
I would comment that the early childhood education research show that these kind of problems are just a huge predictor of problems for children after they get past age five, and so it's a great concern. But Madam President, to Mr. Tame, my question is, the way the federal government usually operates is that they try to seed things and get them started, and then we're expected to come up with funding to sustain it. And my question is, is what you're thinking in terms of, if we get this $8 million and we put programs in place to see that a much larger portion of the children that need help are going to get the help they need, how do we sustain that effort down the road?
You know, that's, Madam President, I think that's an interesting question. It's an interesting question when you deal with this project or whether you deal with law enforcement in general or whether you deal with interoperability. A lot of money is spent by the council, by the Cogga County, by the City of Cleveland, by the state of Ohio, but I'm not sure it's always spent in an efficient manner. And so lots of different projects are going on, but oftentimes, they're not tied together. So kind of like try to reduce redundancies to work more efficiently. You're right, a lot of federal funding comes and what they do is they seed a project, and then a local community has to make a decision whether or not it's, whether it's worthy to keep going or not. And that is a local decision. When we started the Children Who Witness Violence Project, we started with like $50,000. I think that was Cleveland Foundation funding. We got some external funding because it was a successful project. But then a decision was made to support it to the tune of $500,000. A decision has to be made now whether to support it going forward. I think it's a good decision, but I don't have to make difficult budget decisions that you people do.
All right, thank you. We're looking forward to hearing you again.
Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Frangos from the Cogga County Landmark Bank, Land Bank, sorry.
Thank you, Judge Conley, Madam Chairman, members...
Why don't you take his chair?
What's that? Oh. Yeah, I'll stand. Greetings, thank you for, thank you for having us. Pardon me?
You can raise the podium.
Oh, that's a good thing. Thank God for technology. And greetings to Executive Fitzgerald, thank you. Thanks for having us. We really counted a privilege to be able to talk about the Land Bank to the council. And I especially enjoy talking about the council because, about the Land Bank because we view it as just such an important tool. It has elements of regional cooperation. And I think it's, the Land Bank involves a story that I don't think will ever be told quite adequately. And that story is how amidst all of the negative, the negative newspaper articles, the negative things that were happening, there was a tremendous amount of cooperation going on in middle-level management, making things happen and making this Land Bank come alive. Just the foreclosure process alone, which involves significant reform in the statutes, requires the cooperation of the auditor, the treasurer, the prosecutor, the clerk, the court where you file now the border revision, and ultimately the sheriff, and all the way back up the chain. And to get people in those divisions to cooperate amidst all that was happening and to agree to be trained and to adopt different forms was just extraordinary. So I mean, it's something that I think the council, the executive, myself, everybody should be very, very proud about. The Land Bank was in response to the foreclosure crisis. Now let me see, do we have that up? All right, I'm going to have to keep looking then to make sure I signal you, Cheryl. By the way, I'm sorry, Cheryl Stevens is our Director of Acquisitions. She has tremendous development experience, tax credit financing, and she assists with the acquisitions. Bill Whitney is our Chief Operating Officer. He was the President of Detroit Shoreway. He has a tremendous institutional knowledge going back decades. I don't, is it Bill? Oh, there you are, Bill. I thought you left us. He worked for the Department of Development and he's just an invaluable resource to have. I think he knows every single neighborhood in this town. The Land Bank was established, or at least the vision of it, was necessitated by the foreclosure crisis and all the calamity that has happened, the fallout resulting from that crisis. I don't, I think I'd be preaching to the choir to tell you that whole neighborhoods, whole communities have been decimated. The tax base is not only hurt, but it's hemorrhaging. And it continues to hemorrhage unfortunately, particularly in certain parts of the county and the city. So the Land Bank, amongst many capabilities, amongst many missions, is to try to address that in the sense of not dealing with symptoms, but to try to, over a long period of time, try to carve out some of the cancer that caused it so that we can have a community development response to that problem. And the, so there are many, many ways that we act operationally to do that. Before I get into this PowerPoint, I will tell you that I have a version one PowerPoint, which I'm happy to come back at any time, that basically tells you about the Land Bank. I think some of the councilmen here I've been able to meet with from time to time, and it pretty much tells you what the Land Bank is, what its main engines are, and how it basically is legislatively established. But I'm going to dispose of that and talk about what we're actually doing because we have been fully ramped up now for about a year and a half, and I think it's important for the council to know that. So right now, what the Land Bank is doing, we view a large problem from a macro standpoint on the PowerPoint, is the tax base itself. The foreclosure crisis, the decimation of property values, the 20,000 or so border revision appeals that are going on. I don't know if that number is accurate, but that's what I hear anecdotally. People are going to board, to the border revision, and they're saying, I want to have my property value reduced because I live next to a house that's been stripped, the copper's been taken out, and so hence, my property is not worth less, it's worthless. Who wants to live next to a house that's stripped out like that? So those appeals, it would be bad enough in and of itself that that blight sits there and it corrupts that value, but every vacant house corrupts in a concentric ring fashion, corrupts millions of dollars' worth of real estate value. So the issue and the underlying cancer that the Land Bank was designed to try to gradually try to deal with is that, is that, is that problem to the tax base. And why the tax base? I mean, the tax base isn't, you know, something that just sits by itself. I mean, the tax base funds the schools, the tax base funds the counties, the governments, et cetera, et cetera. So ultimately, it's a quality of life issue. And unfortunately, as the PowerPoint shows there, it's estimated to be between $150 million to $200 million dollar problem in Cogga County. I had one councilman from the City of Cleveland tell me that he had earnestly spent, you know, the last couple of months putting together all the vacant and abandoned properties in his ward. He identified the ones that were tax-foreclosed, identifies the ones that were condemned and needed to come down, and he called me up and said, okay, Gus, I need, I need you to take down 700 properties in my ward. And I said, councilman, you know, 700 properties, that's going to eat up the whole budget. The point is that that was just one ward. So, you know, match that, it's just an exponential problem that we're dealing with. I have down here community development, economic development, because I think, again, I'd be preaching to the choir to say that economic development oftentimes stands on its own, so does community development, but they also feed each other. Good community development will promote economic development and vice versa. From the standpoint of the Land Bank, the Land Bank is not necessarily intended to be an entity like the Downtown Business Council or Cleveland Tomorrow or the Partnership, which seeks to put loans together and does an individual project. The Land Bank is designed to try to promote economic development through assembling land, through getting land in the hands of responsible rehabbers, from trying to do that, that arduous task of cutting out the cancer over a long period of time. Next page, Cheryl, okay. With the land, well, we spent our first six months basically taking the enablements that the legislature gave us, and we tried to set up the pipelines and set up the systems and tools to allow us to operate and take advantage to the greatest possible extent of those legislative enablements. So what we did was we, we needed to start with opening up the pipelines, and those pipelines for vacant and abandoned and distressed properties come from bank REOs. The D and L is just an occasional transfer, if somebody can't pay their taxes, they give their property to a city. But bank REOs is where the big problem was. HUD was another huge problem. And the GSEs, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and ultimately, tax foreclosure. Those pipelines were essential to set up because that, as you'll see in a moment, that's where the trafficking of property occurs. And I use that word trafficking because that's sort of what it's like. People take properties, some low-value properties, and they sort of traffic in them in bulk. People from New York, California, overseas will seal a securitized pool and they'll buy it. So essentially, their basis will be maybe $500 in a particular property, and they sell it to this person, to that person, to that person for $1,000, for $1,500, until finally, it gets to the sap who really wants to do something with it, and he finds out, he pays $5,000 for it and finds out that the thing is so bad it's in housing court and that it just begins the iteration of tax foreclosure again. And that was and continues to be the biggest problem. So it was important for us to establish pipelines to allow us to be a repository for that. The property triage you see here is, imagine that that's the Land Bank for a second. When we, when we opened the pipelines and they start coming in, we triage every single property. Every single property has to get looked at, evaluated, sized up, and determined whether it's going to be a demolition, whether it's a candidate for rehab, whether it can go to the metro parks, whether it can be somehow strategically used. And so the boxes below are the boxes that the triage is designed to try to match up. Right now, unfortunately, a huge part of the activities of the Land Bank is demolition. There's just so much demolition that has to occur, and cities are not equipped at this point to be able to handle that level. City landbanks only take properties that are not, that don't have structures on them. Now, they're able legally to take properties with structures, but they don't for obvious reasons because they, that's a liability that they can't sustain. Next page, Cheryl. So now that we have the pipelines established, the community, and when I say the community, I mean, Community Development Department of Cities, the NPIs of the world, the First Suburb Consortium, people that are all of our stakeholders, that we all know. Over a period of time, the consensus was and continues to be that the biggest problem is Fannie Mae and HUD. Now, Fannie Mae and HUD, they didn't want to be the problem. Basically, they ended up getting these low-value assets from loans that they guaranteed. So the subprime loans all failed, and they ultimately are the proud recipients of these low-value assets. So initially, their thought was is, well, we need to protect the taxpayer and start trafficking in these properties to get 500, 200, 1,000, anything for these properties, not realizing that they were participating in the iteration of distress and tax foreclosure. And so what it meant was, in the end, the community, the taxpayer was not just receiving $500 from a sale of a HUD property, they were, they were buying into the $7,000 it takes to demolish it, the $3,000 that have to be used to field service that property, and ultimately, the corruption of the comparable on the street where that property is to millions of dollars of real estate. So to their credit, to their credit, Fannie Mae, and we were the first, we were the first community in the country, Fannie Mae did sign a deal with us. They had sort of been forged with the City of Cleveland, but ultimately, the Land Bank tool, I think, is what appealed to them because it, because it just has such good transactional capabilities. So Fannie Mae forged a deal, we take all of their assets, $25,000 or less for a dollar, and they pay us $3,500 to contribute to the demolition cost. Shortly after Fannie did that, that sort of prompted HUD, which was perhaps even worse in the minds of many, to do the same. So now HUD, we have a similar agreement. The city, again, had started it, we wanted to take it over, and we felt that it was more useful to be a county-wide agreement. HUD, again, to their credit, said yes, and they did that. The ultimate, the other, the other big source was tax foreclosure. I mean, I think if you talk to Colleen Majeski over at the prosecutor's office, she will tell you that up until the Land Bank had gotten off the ground, they were, they were appealing, or they were foreclosing on vacant and abandoned property at a much slower rate. But the problem was is that the community was objecting to that. People in CDCs were saying, you know, this is a vacant property in my ward, it's tax delinquent, the title is unclean, treasurer, prosecutor, foreclose on these things. Well, where do they go? So ultimately, through the Land Bank bill, Senate Bill 353, it had, it included significant tax foreclosure reform. As many of you know, that tax reform included tax foreclosures, administrative tax foreclosures in the Board of Revision for just vacant and abandoned property. It's an expedited process. It's very streamlined. It eliminates the lengthy sheriff sales and all the problems, all the administrative up and down, the administrative process that used to exist. So now vacant and abandoned properties, they move quickly. Instead of two and a half years being caught in the system, four, five, six months, it goes through, and that's a border revision that works tremendously. I mean, it's just doing an excellent job. So those things are established. Next one, Cheryl? Oh. Okay. How much, I'll step on it here. Now that the pipelines are established, now that we're demolishing homes left and right, now that we have deals with HUD, Fannie Mae, REOs, we're getting 20 or 30 properties a month from Wells Fargo, from Bank of America, all the quote-unquote evil banks that community developments were complaining about. And by the way, the Land Bank is not an ideologue. Our deal is not to go out and smash banks or to kiss them, you know, our deal is to just try to get the job done. And so, and I think that's frankly why banks are starting to come to the table where they were sitting underneath a rock for many, many years. But the problem now is that it's a situation where be wary of what you ask for because you may get it. So now, you know, we're looking at approximately 35 properties a month being, coming at us from HUD, I mean, from Fannie Mae, I'm sorry, from HUD. 40 properties a month from Fannie, roughly 20 REOs, 20 to 25 now from REOs. And the biggest pipeline now is going to be tax foreclosure, vacant and abandoned property that's coming through really, really fast. Again, don't, don't, don't perceive that that very fast, quick tax foreclosure without sheriff sales... sheriff sales applies to occupied structures. If something's occupied or something's living in there, it goes the traditional route, because you have obviously issues with that. Somebody could have lost a job, a spouse could have died, et cetera, et cetera. This is just vacant and abandoned property where this happens real quick. So now, we're looking at anywhere between 120 and 180 properties potentially coming at us a month, which we obviously cannot take. So the question is, we have developed, and we are, we are hopefully going to roll this out in the next couple of weeks, and it's probably the, again, there's nothing like it in the country, because I go all over the place, and I listen to people, and I am a panelist myself on a lot of these things, and so we are, we are putting something together which we affectionately call the "I" in the land bank. And what that means is that there are many very good databases in Cuyahoga County. There's the Otter's website, the Treasurer's website, et cetera, the Clerk of Courts, et cetera, et cetera. And are any of you familiar with Neo Can Do at a case Western Reserve? It's a, it's a highly sophisticated scrubbing source of data. It goes into all these data sources, and it scrubs them. But if you wanted to do something, if you wanted to have them correlate, Neo Can Do would still have to go in and manually correlate them. So what we are going to establish is the ability of these databases to start seeing, seeing. So when a property, go to the next page, Cheryl. So this is what is lacking, and this is what I think will be, in the long run, transformative in my estimation. Right now, there, if I were to tell you that, well, the question is, is if I have 400 or 500 properties coming at me, why should I take this 150 and not the other 150? Where is the accountability? Why do I take one and not the other? And so this is what the "I" is intended to do. There are certain intuitive inquiries that all of us would have, probably, sitting at the table here today, would agree, are things that we would consider at least prima facie evidence of being a strategic acquisition. In other words, is it in an NSP-2 area? We have grants, we have to spend that money, NSP-2 areas have already been predefined as, you know, important areas. Is there city-owned property next to it? Is there land bank-owned property next to it? Is there a tax foreclosure pending indicating that it'll be assembled? Is it tax delinquent, suitable or eligible for the border revision? Is there a private, and on and on and on. This, this will search pulled building permits. So, you know, for example, we, our business plan says that we're supposed to be catalytic. Well, that's a really great platitude, we know what it means, we're supposed to be strategic, but what does that mean in actuality? Well, these are the things that this "I" is going to help us with, because if I see a property and I put it into the "I," and the "I" comes back and tells me that the Cleveland Clinic is, or some institution, has $2 million in permits that they had pulled, that tells me that that's probably a good acquisition, I probably should do something there, because it'll be catalytic. And then, of course, you know, the regular GIS overlays will be on that. And so those are the kind of intuitive things that are what I call above-the-line, things that we're going to establish. The next page. Below the line now are things that individual stakeholders, individual stakeholders have an interest in, like the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, obviously. You probably all know that they have to find land, they have to find ways to do water retention that are not just gray underneath the ground, they have to do swales and things of those kinds, things of that sort, so they need land. So they've been talking significantly with the land bank to try to set up a system where we can put them into this, into this system of ours. And it's not just Northeast Ohio Sewer District, it's everybody, it's individual CDCs, you know, whether it's in South Euclid, or whether it's in Cleveland Heights. If they have an issue that is different than what is otherwise intuitive, but they're really focusing on something, it's a filter that can be added to this "I" to allow cities to really tap into, and we are really, really regionally rocking and rolling, in essence, from a community development standpoint. So it's very exciting. The benefit to this "I" also has a lot to do with just efficiency as well. I had a meeting in the city of Cleveland with Chris Warren and the Treasurer's Office and officials from the Prosecutor's Office about this volume of vacant and abandoned property. And what the prosecutor told us was is that they, they have about 4,000 preliminary judicial reports in their budget to pursue tax foreclosures. A preliminary judicial report is the predicate to filing a tax foreclosure. I'm not sure how many lawyers are on the panel, but you would know what I'm talking about there. But anyway, it's a predicate to doing a tax foreclosure. When the tax foreclosure of these lots occurs in November or some point, they statutorily have to be published. So what the Treasurer and what the prosecutor told us is that we have 6, 7, 8,000 coming in the pike, but we only have a budget for 4,000, and only 3,000 of those are going to actually go to tax foreclosure. So they basically was asking in the city, many of them are in your jurisdiction, "Tell us which one you want to do." And the city is, is in the position of, "Well, I don't know which ones to tell you, I don't know how they're strategic." This, this system will promote that, and in the end, it'll end up promoting efficiency with the interagency, with the prosecutor, with the treasurer, and ultimately, working with us to be, not only strategic on the intake, but strategic on the backend as well. To tell you a little bit about just what we've done so far, just, you know, numbers kind of a thing. To date, we have acquired a total of 685 properties, that's probably more like about 100 more than that now, because it's a moving target. This was done roughly a couple of weeks ago, so we're about, close to 800 properties have come into the land bank. But using this dated document here, about two weeks old, we acquired 685, we've transferred 158 to developers or other cities. Developers meaning people who do rehabs, who do, or it could be the metro park, it could be anybody. Primarily, though, those are going back to the city of Cleveland, land bank parcels that the city wants the vacant land on. We have a, we have a pretty sophisticated system of making sure that rehabbers who do buy from us, they have to be pre-vetted, and they ultimately have to agree to a reasonable spec. We don't make them put granite countertops, but, but they have to pull a permit, and they have to do the property according to, and get a certificate of occupancy. And so I'll spare you what our system is in that, but so, current inventory, when you subtract the one from the other, you get 527 properties. We have pending acquisitions, 111. Go to the next page, Cheryl, please. Demolition, we have now demolished 173 properties, again, probably a little bit more than that. Under contract, we have 124, again, probably a little bit more than that, and we have out-for-bid 94 presently as we speak. So that is the volume that, that the land bank is churning out on a weekly, monthly Rehab sales, we have three, three different, four different programs, straight sale, deed and escrow, straight sale NSP, and in-house, and these are the amounts of properties that we're doing so far. NSP, if you have questions about that, Bill Whitney is here, he's some kind of our guru navigating us through the muddy waters of NSP. In terms of recoupment, our mission and our funding doesn't necessarily contemplate recoupment of money. It's a funding stream that was designed to try to deal with this problem, and to demolish homes, and to get them, and try to reclaimate them. However, obviously, you heard what I said earlier, that it's 150 million to 200 million dollar problem, so wherever we can, we need to try to be recouping. We did get a $400,000 grant from the U.S. EPA for environmental assessments and things of that sort that helps us when we're doing demolitions. We also get a little bit of grants here and there, but ultimately, we try our best, particularly with the cooperation of housing courts, to use the leverage of the housing court to get flippers, or investors, or bank REOs who have walked away from the, walked away from the property, to pay the nuisance liens, to pay the old water sewer bill, to pay the tax that's in arrears. Additionally, as I said, with Fannie Mae, they give us $3,500 a property. Many banks now, which were, which originally, when we started this thing, was, "We'll give you this junk property, and you pay us $15,000." Then it was, "We'll give you, we'll give it to you for, and you give us a dollar." And now it's, you know, "Take this property off our back, and we'll give you $7,500 to demolish it." So at that point, that's an amen, we can do that. So in that recoupment, we have, in those sources, at least for the last year, we have $1,170,000. The sale, the rehab and the sales has been a slower process, because we've had to really figure it out to make sure that rehabs happen responsibly, because we don't want to be called flippers ourselves, getting property and then turning around and just giving it to anybody. But that process, early as it is, has resulted in $226,000. The last page is just a little bit of, you know, continued vision. I mean, I can, I can say with confidence that the systems and the interagency cooperation and forums and all of that are in place, and they work very, very well. It's probably, I used to be a councilman myself, I could say honestly that this is probably the best integrated, efficient system that I've ever seen since I was in government back in the 80s, when I was serving with Councilman Brady. So it's working real good, but I think now the vision has to be, how can we be more strategic? How can I, how can I find, you know, sources of additional revenue, and how can I be creative? And that could be everything from beginning to develop occupied properties, doing targeted development. We have a pretty elaborate salvage bank project that we're going to hopefully unveil, and that'll start bringing in some money. And then the reverse of that is cost savings. How can I save money? Well, EPA, EPA just came down with an edict a few months ago, whenever it was, Cheryl, and that's going to cost us like $700,000, $800,000, just because of what we maintain to be a really ridiculous kind of a regulation. But regulation costs money, so some's good, some's bad. But, but we are working with U.S. EPA to try to deal with some of that, so they understand who we are, we're not the bad guy here, and maybe they'll open up the door. A lot of other ways that we can save money is by working with cities. We have memorandum of understanding, we work with probably over 35 cities now on some more or less level. Primarily Cleveland and the inner ring suburbs, but certainly University Heights, North Royal, we've had, we've had relationships with all of them. The point-of-sale inspections, we now have good arrangements with many cities there, so we're not spending money there. Title services, we spend, every property has to be, you know, carefully gotten and made sure that title is good, so we spend a lot of money on title services, so maybe a title company in-house would be a good thing. So those are the kinds of things that we're doing, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or to come back, or to meet individually with any council members should they wish to learn more about the land bank.
Thank you, Mr. Frankos. Questions? Mr. Greenspan? Mr. Miller?
Thank you. I hope three quick questions. The land bank properties, the inventory of 527, where are those properties primarily allocated, or where are those properties?
They're all over the county, but primarily Cleveland and the inner ring suburbs, Garfield, Maple, East Cleveland, Euclid, Lakewood. And, but we, you know, we get them in University Heights, Bedford, Bedford Heights, they're pretty much all over. We have a couple in Parma, but primarily the inner ring suburbs in Cleveland.
As a percentage, those would be of the 527, about what percentage?
Hard to say, Cheryl, maybe full 60, or 50/50, maybe?
Great, thank you. You made a statement that the, you're not required to recoup the funds that are allocated. Is that an internal requirement, or is that, where did that requirement come from? Who set that requirement?
What I meant to say there is that the statutory funding doesn't envision that, but obviously, good practice and sensible, you know, administration of a company is get what you can, and so that's pretty much set inside with me and my staff. I mean, staff knows, you know, when there's an opportunity to recoup, we need to go after it.
And, I'm sorry, the last question regarding your funding. Where's your funding primarily, what's your allocation of your funding?
The funding, try to put a mouthful into maybe, into one phrase. We arbitrage the penalty and interest on delinquent real estate taxes. Do you want me to go into that a little more?
Well, no, I understand what, is that your only source?
That's the primary source, and then recoupment is the other, and if we can get grants and things of that sort, but that's the primary source, and that source yields roughly $6 to $7 million annually, and it's a scrub of that penalty and interest off a billion and a half dollar real estate tax bill that goes out annually.
Great, thank you. I have no further questions.
Mr. Miller?
Madam President, I would just like to make a comment that I was, I was in the legislature when the land bank was created, and the...
Both of you.
The legislature gave the land bank powers that are equal to any, any in the country, and so we should take advantage of the opportunity. It remains a pilot program, it's in effect only in Cuyahoga County. There is, there is a lot of interest in other parts of the state to, to expand the authorization for land banks of this type, but I don't think it's been done yet, so.
Mr. Chairman, or Madam Chairman, it did, last summer, many communities got upset at that, and they ultimately passed a bill last summer. So now it has opened up to most other counties, and about six of them now are doing it, Trumbull, Lucas, Montgomery, and one or two others.
Madam President, my point is that there's a lot of interest around the state in taking advantage of the same program that we've been doing, so I would encourage that we build on it and take advantage of it, and I think it can be a effective part of our economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Frankos, I'm, thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering, I'm pleased to hear about the partnership with Neo Can Do, and I think the potential for that on planning purposes could be really great for the county. And I'm wondering, is the land bank itself and the staff and board of the land bank, are they doing planning with this information, or are they simply making it available for municipalities and other entities to do planning?
It's a multi-leveled answer, but I can tell you that what we're doing with that information is just tremendously important on so many levels, operationally, you know, again, and now strategically, as I've tried to describe here. But we don't, we don't per se do city planning for other cities, unlike Genesee County in Flint, Michigan, from which this, our land bank was, was, I mean, that was the progeny. They have very limited planning abilities, so that land bank actually does some quote-unquote "city planning." We're very fortunate here, because we don't, our cities actually have fairly well-developed and mature planning departments. So what we do is we, we help them with data if they need it, and they, those that we have MOUs with, and you don't have to have an MOU, Bedford Heights, me and the mayor just have a handshake, but they use that data to help them answer questions and to determine, you know, what the trajectory of a particular property is. But frankly, we would probably get our hides tanned if we tried to do planning in some places like Shaker Heights, and South Euclid, and Lakewood, and where they have, you know, pretty skilled and mature planning departments. But, but it's a real partnership.
In your experience, how, how do you think it would be taken from other municipalities if the county were to generate a countywide kind of land use plan? Would that be something that would be helpful to the land bank? Is that something that, in your experience, do you see other municipalities being able to buy into if the, if it was a good land use plan?
Well, in a sense, I mean, the, the planning department, your county planning commission sort of does that, and they kind of do it, as I understand it, as an overlay. I mean, from, that was a question I had for Paul Alcinous, you know, how do you, how do you, you know, integrate between the individual plans and individual cities and the county? You know, I mean, for example, the combined sewer overflow issue, that doesn't, you know, doesn't stop at a boundary. And what he said was is that they try to develop both. They incorporate local or city plans with a county plan, and to the extent that they make sense, you know, they incorporate it, they blend it in. make sense, you know, they incorporate it, they blend it in. To the extent that they don't, you know, discussions occur. So, I think, and I could be wrong about this, but I think that there is essentially a countywide plan. How developed it is and how cross-jurisdictional by intent, I'm not so sure.
Any other questions? Mr. Brady?
Not a question. As you know, I'm the council's representative on the land bank. Actually, the Cuyahoga Reutilization Corporation is a very special and unique institution, and I'm proud to be the council's representative. But I wanted to make sure early on that there was a, for those who weren't noticing one of these many, many areas in county government that are in front of us, that this is an important one. It's also a delicate one. This was, there have been people, including the former county treasurer, Mr. Rukakis, who have worked very hard. This is seen as a national model. It's a very special thing that we have here. We have had a crisis, have a crisis, but it was one of those stories where Cuyahoga County really did respond in a way that was, I think, pretty effective and pretty amazing. As we go forward, it's going to be very important that this new county government work very closely with Cleveland City Hall and all the municipalities of the county. But as you've heard, 2/3 of these properties are in the city of Cleveland. It's going to be very important that we work closely with Cleveland City Hall and get a thorough understanding of what it is that we're dealing with here in terms of all of this property. So, again, like a lot of other issues, I wanted to lay this before the council as one of 100 things that we've got in our minds that I consider to be very important and very sensitive and could be damaged if it's not handled in the right way, even whatever the best intentions might be. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Schreier?
Is there an effort to look at zoning issues as to these land bank properties as they get amassed? And are there pieces of property that can create big enough blocks of locations should rezoning be necessary? And do we participate in that to suggest that this block could be contiguous to perhaps a light commercial? And though up until this point, it may be as residential, but do we suggest rezoning and participate in that process?
We don't directly participate in zoning, you know, as the land bank or the county for that matter. But your question about assemblages, that is the point. That is the point of the strategic acquisitions and the long-term view of it. Again, if it doesn't make sense for me to get one parcel that's just out there by itself and has no impact. On the other hand, if I'm seeing that it's an assemblage, you know, for example, in North Broadway where my old ward used to be, used to have a lot of homes there, there's nothing there now. There's a bunch of homes, more vacant lots and more vacant homes. Now, that's like, that's less than a mile away from the core of downtown. There's probably, you know, several hundred acres that could result in an assemblage. The same thing happens, you know, near University Circle with East Cleveland, the Cleveland Clinic. And so, yes, I would maintain that if we have assemblages and we start doing that, then that is the time to begin considering issues. And people are considering it, in my opinion, of either shrinking those, consolidating lots, vacating streets and turning it into something else. Because you can't have, at least as far as Cleveland concerns, and you can't have the same land use when you had a million people in the town, now that you have 390 in the town. So, I mean, that's not a popular word, you know, shrinkage and shrinking cities, but it just is what it is, you know? So, we have to do what you're saying.
As a follow-up, Madam President, but the only reason you're doing an assemblage, it seems to me, is that you have some purpose or some strategic plan for that assemblage to take place. And with that, you must be looking at how that assemblage is going to transition to its next and logical use, which oftentimes requires somebody to say, "This needs to be going forward as a rezoning opportunity. Why wouldn't we take that role and say, 'This is the logical next step of how we ...'"
You mean as a county, or?
Well, as a county, and as councilman, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Because I know where you're going. For instance, you know, one of the members of the board is Chris Warren, who, for people who, including yourself, know, is one of the best people in the region on these issues. And as the former economic development director of the city, and in a thousand other ways, he's the kind of person who looks at those kinds of things. They don't try to tell people what to do. They try to help people like Chris Warren and people from your other communities do what they need to do.
And we do a significant amount of interaction that way. But still, to your point, that whole bit about the "I," it is designed to do that. You know, that is the point. If we have all these properties, which ones are going to be catalytic? Which ones are going to be strategic? Which ones lend themselves to either an economic development project? And so, to the extent that cities have already mapped those areas out, I mean, many of cities have developed pretty sophisticated wish lists in terms of their planning, you know, if the opportunity arises. And so, I know, I used to not understand Mayor Jackson's desire to have all of the properties coming from tax foreclosure. I thought to myself, "That can't be fun, just getting hundreds of lots and you get the privilege of cutting the lawn every ..." But I came to understand that there is planning going on, and if you don't have cash, cash is king, but if you don't have cash, the next best thing is land. And I remember, I mean, and it's, I'm a real estate lawyer myself, going back many years, and what people typically do is, if they can speculate and land happened in the flats, you know, in the worst kind of way, people would pick up little slivers of land underneath the county bridge or along the way. And, you know, when we tried to do National Terminals, a beautiful project, somebody who picked up a little sliver for literally $900, ended up getting $900,000 20 years later on in eminent domain because you couldn't do national terminals because somebody was sitting on that land. So, I think his idea is that, yes, when we have a project, when we have an end user, we definitely need to pursue it. And this is the tool, or one of the tools, that we work with everybody, all the stakeholders. But if you don't have an end user, and that's the problem right now, I mean, there's just, there's way too much surplus. I wish there was a developer for every piece of land that we took, but in the meantime, we can at least hold, assemble, keep it out of the hands of flippers, and begin to try to take garbage properties off the market so at least property values aren't being affected by the trafficking in those properties. So, it's a little bit all and yes to your point.
Mr. Jaban?
Madam Chair, it's, I have the impression, and, you know, I'm not an expert on this, but it seems like we're not over the hill. We're still having more foreclosures coming forward, and the land bank deals with the end product. And these banks, they're taking a beating when they, after they foreclose, and getting nothing, and a lot of times, it's costing them money. I'm just wondering if there's a way we could get ahead of this. It's almost like curing polio, vaccinating, so that if there was some kind of procedure where government could get ahead of the curve so that we don't have the disasters, and the banks should realize that if we could, you know, save them from having to go into this foreclosure, they're going to be dollars ahead.
Well, the banks, on that point, are already, you know, one step ahead because, you know, when they discerned that many of the properties they were getting in the inner ring suburbs in the city were substandard, they couldn't get their equity out, they just would foreclose and then they would stop. They wouldn't go to sheriff's sale. Then the community would get mad and say, tell the judges, force the sale. Then banks got smart and said, "Well, we're not going to file." So, now they're not even filing lawsuits and the title remains corrupt, and so that's their out. Well, now they're kind of getting a beating, certainly from a public relations standpoint, but also now on a regulatory basis. That's where I think, but I think it's really, my honest impression of that is that being able to have a tool to get those properties off the market and be able to take them from REOs the way that we're doing in the long haul is one way that we can get ahead of the curve. Ultimately, I think that there needs to be a private sector, a big injection of private sector cooperation. And I'm not prepared to talk to the council about that, but that is a very, very relevant and ongoing conversation that I am involved in for the last two months. I mean, we meet every three weeks with 15 of the biggest servicers in the country, right here in Cleveland, are on conference calls, Doish, Fannie Mae, Saxon, all of them, Citibank. And this is the issue. The issue is, okay, we understand who you are, we're willing to work with you, you know, what can you do for us? I tell them, "I can't do anything. I'll take your toilet properties. I can do that if you give me some money." But they're at the point now where they recognize that they're starting to put equity pools together, equity pools that can kind of start taking these properties and catching, like, pre-Fannie Mae foreclosed properties when they're occupied, and actually investing money and putting people into homes. So, in other words, foreclosure prevention, which we think is just a big subsidy and a loser, it's actually, it could be a moneymaker if done right, if properly capitalized. So, the non-bankable person who also nevertheless has a job, plays by the rules, but just is not bankable because maybe he only makes $25,000, all of a sudden, that person becomes a viable homeowner if he's in this part of capital, this type of capitalization. I would be happy to, it's a bit more complex, I would be happy to talk to you about that because that's something that I think a real partnership would be good at. It would be good for the land bank, the county, the city, and everybody to try to piece together. Anyway.
Well, actually, you just said you weren't prepared to go into the private sector efforts to, so let me reword my question. What is Mayor Frank Jackson? If you're aware, Mayor Frank Jackson and Chris Warren and those, you know, how do they envision Cleveland as a city with a smaller population? How do they see the city? Is urban farming a part of it? I heard about reimagining Cleveland. What do they envision the city being like? As you acquire the land, do they see-
Yeah, I can't-
Homes covered with, you know, cabbage patches?
I obviously can't speak for the mayor and wouldn't venture, but I mean, you know, I think that they're realists, and I think that on the one hand, they're realists, they know what's happening in the market, and they're trying to adjust. They're trying to embrace the reimagining initiative. They're trying to embrace private sector where possible. They're trying to embrace, you know, the Ohio Extension and Park Works and everybody that's talking about, you know, new uses for land. But at the same time, you know, I think they would be the first to say that, you know, there's just some neighborhoods and some places that are not going to come back. They're not going to just all of a sudden have all kinds of housing again. And the sooner everybody just sort of embraces that principle, you know, it's probably a good thing. I mean, it just is what it is, which is not to say abandon, you know, the city, but you just have to think, you know, where can we still address the quality of life in a meaningful way? So, I know that's kind of a punt there in terms of the answer, but it's the best I can do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Frankos. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, council members. Appreciate the opportunity. Again, anytime I can preach the gospel of land bank individually or as a group, just give me a call, I'm happy to do it. Thank you all very much.
Are there any miscellaneous committee reports?
Madam President, real quick, it's my wife's birthday, so it's going to be very quick.
What are you doing here?
The Ethics Committee, we will be meeting next Tuesday, but our focus will be on the Inspector General. The expectation is to have the various bodies that the Inspector General will interface with have representation there from the sheriff, the prosecutor's office, hopefully the AG's office, maybe the IG's office. That'll be next Tuesday. However, I did ask today for a soft deadline to get amendments to the Ethics Ordinance. I've received some. Please forward those to me as quickly as possible so I can compile that. That will be up for vote next Tuesday at our special meeting. And just on a personal note, I want to thank everyone for the well wishes as my wife and I had our baby this past Friday. So, I want to thank everyone for that.
All right, any other committee reports?
Counsel?
Mr. Brady?
Just to announce that the Family and Children First Council and the Fatherhood Initiative will give presentations at our Health and Human Services Committee this Thursday at 1:00.
Anything further, miscellaneous? I'd just like to comment under miscellaneous business. I was very impressed with Majid's comments about the voluntary juvenile diversion programs. I just wanted to point out how important those programs are, that so many of the suburbs have them, a lot of the western suburbs have them, and these keep these children out of the juvenile detention system. And unfortunately, Cleveland and the eastern suburbs don't have those programs, and those children end up in the juvenile justice system. So, I think that it's something to think, that county council would think about looking at, is seeing how we could facilitate getting those programs, because every child we can keep out of that juvenile justice center is a child that probably won't come back. And, you know, we can stop some of these problems and the button, get more people like you to volunteer. It's a wonderful program, and I was aware of this problem, you know, last year, so I was working with some other committees, but it's a wonderful program. We just need to think about how we can do it and get the cities, most of the cities apparently don't have money to run these projects, and we just got to figure out how we can help them out. Anything else under miscellaneous business? Yes, Mr. Miller?
Madam President, I would like to just put out a gentle reminder that we requested that everyone who has concerns or suggested amendments about the contracting and procurement ordinance, if you could get those to Purnell and to me by Monday in advance of our committee meeting, which is on the 6th. The council president doesn't like for a host of amendments to come in on third reading in front of the full council.
It's clerk.
And the clerk doesn't like it either, and they're both right about that. We should do this kind of work in the committee. So, that that could happen, I would ask if, please bring those amendments forward so that we can do our work in the committee meeting next Wednesday and get that legislation ready for the council. Thank you.
All right, anything further?
Madam President? Just as a final note, the Baby Committee has a surprise for Mr. Greenspan, colleague Greenspan, before he has to run home for his birthday, so I ask that council join us after this meeting.
Oh.
The Baby Committee thought there should be more.
All right, is there any public comment? All right, there'd be no public comment. The next work session will be at 4:00 on April the 5th, and our next regular meeting will be on April the 5th at 6:00. We also have committee meetings that are available for all the various dates on the website. All right.
It'll be a special meeting?
Special meeting, right, special meeting. And so, is there any other, what? It's like we meet every week, so I can't, I thought this was a special meeting.
No, this is a work session, confirmation hearings, but next week's meeting will be a special meeting at 4:00.
Okay. Is there any other business-